Good evening, members of the Executive and fellow councillors and officers. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Waverley Executive. Just a couple of housekeeping points before we start. We are not expecting a fire alarm this evening, so if it does sound, it is likely to be the real thing. Can I ask you to just familiarise yourself with the fire exits? There is one immediately behind you and there is one over here to my right of the council chamber. Please exit carefully and quickly. Assemble outside Waitrose where we will take a register and then, once you're all safely accounted for, you can leave. But as I say, we're not expecting a fire alarm tonight, so let's proceed with the meeting. And the first item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 4th of December 2018. So are you content, Executive, to confirm that those are correct? They've laid on the table for the required half an hour and I will sign those at the end of the meeting.
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absence, Mr Taylor.
None received, Leader.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest?
None received in advance, Leader.
Thank you.
It's like councillor Storey wishes too.
I did tell Fiona some time back that I have an interest in, I don't know what item number it is now, the one about the council tax.
Item eight. No, but agenda item eight, thank you.
It is a pecuniary interest, so I will be leaving the meeting.
Thank you councillor Storey. Do we have any other declarations?
No.
Very much. If I move to questions from members of the public, I don't think we have any. Can I just double check that?
No questions, Leader.
Thank you, Mrs Cameron. And if we move to item five, which is questions from members, we received a question from councillor David Beeman in relation to a planning matter and I understand, councillor Beeman, you've had that response.
Yes, thank you, Leader. I shall await the interest, what happens on 12/13 in Guildford, with great interest.
Thank you very much. I think we all will. So in that case, we're that time of year again. It's February, it's budget time and this evening's meeting is mainly going to be led by one portfolio holder, I think, this evening. But before we look to councillor Hall, I would personally, and I know the rest of the Executive, would like to thank the Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee for all their hard work, led by and chaired by councillor Beeman and vice chaired by councillor Band. I know you did a sterling job a couple of weeks ago on that and provided some very robust scrutiny and we all do appreciate that. Councillor Beeman, I know we've been in contact and you're going to speak on this item first and then I have councillor Band. So if I can invite you to speak, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Leader. Well, for this particular meeting, we just cleared the decks of every other item on the agenda, so we just focused on this particular item of the budget. And in fact, we invited all the members of the council to come and we had a good turnout of around 20, I think it was, in total. And we had a good debate and everybody said their piece, which was the important thing of all, of course. Now, superficially, it looks as though, you know, with what outturns and others, it looks not too bad as an outturn budget for next year. That is indeed true, especially with the way things have gone. No negative grants and no, and the good turnout on the sort of refuse collection contracts. Looking at the specific projects, though, we did say, we did offer the recommendation regarding recommendation three, which is in relation to fees and charges and that we think that really, I mean, this whole thing was raised in the previous year and I think councillor Band may well expand on that in due course. And we think that this is, time is now right to have a look at the whole schedule of fees and charges, certainly, because quite frankly, I mean, we don't know how much has been raised by each item and we don't know whether in fact we're maximising the revenue from each item. So we are recommending that the recommendation is amended accordingly. Looking to the longer term future, though, I mean, it's a very cautious budget. It assumes that we shall lose our business grant and we know not to underestimate that, in fact. In fact, when we look at the business grant, you know, it's 38 million pounds that Waverley collects, of which it only retains 2 million pounds. Now, at the moment, myself and councillor Mulliner went on a sort of seminar at the LGA, which was very interesting, although I wouldn't talk off the top of my head in some respects. But I mean, in fact, they currently are out to consultation on both a review of relative needs and resources, a fair funding review, and also, in fact, also the business retention reform. If Waverley in fact loses all that money, as the budget, you know, projects, then, I mean, that's, in my opinion, is a great injustice to this council, as I mean, it does have sort of social areas of deprivation. And I would hope that the council will be putting forward a very strong argument that in fact there will be, if the percentage is going to increase from 50 to 75 per cent, for example, that the council will more than retain its first share of business rates. I think it's very important and it's something that needs to be emphasised. And the consultation date is Thursday 21st of February, and I'm sure Mr Clark knows all too well, but I think a strong, robust point needs to be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Beeman. Councillor Band?
Thank you, Leader. And first I can say I endorse what councillor Beeman has just said. And the second thing, I'd like to congratulate the portfolio holder, Jade Hall, and the officers for the report they've produced here. I think it's a very comprehensive report and sets out in some detail the challenges which face Waverley. I think it's worth just going back to see what 18 months ago, the Value for Money and Customer Services ONS Committee expressed a view that a radical rethink was going to be required as to how services and frontline and support were delivered to meet the challenges in the future. And I think the figures in Annex One amply demonstrate that that is as real today, in fact, it's more real today than it was 18 months ago when the committee made that comment. I think there's a real challenge in front of the Executive, both from this administration and no doubt the one that's going to follow after the elections in May, and the officers, to actually address these particular issues. And I am concerned that when you actually look at the budget strategy set out in paragraph eight, the areas where cost savings may be come from are going to be severely challenged. And I would like to be assured that particularly, if you look at the fourth bullet point, cost savings from business transformation, et cetera, that the target of this 1.7 billion saving is really embedded in the process, because from what we have seen to date in the Working Party, the Budget Working Strategy Group, the quantum of the saving which is going to be required to meet this challenge over the next three years doesn't necessarily seem to be clear. So I'd just like reassured that this 1.7 billion, which has been flagged up, and I think quite rightly been flagged up, needs to be an integral part of the thinking as to how we're going to achieve and change our services to meet this target. So thank you, Leader.
Councillor Band, thank you. Councillor Beeman, thank you as well. Can I hand over to councillor Hall?
I've almost forgot my name, Lead. Thank you. I'd like to thank councillor Beeman, councillor Band for their comments. With regard to councillor Beeman's comments about fees and charges, yes, of course, this is something we can give more granularity on and more detail. It's right and proper that members of the council and the overview and scrutiny should get that and we're obviously happy to provide it via the officers, so those totals can be looked at. With regard to what councillor Band said regarding cost savings, I mean, Peter Vickers and his team are working on all areas of the council to implement a type of smart working, which brings efficiencies to the processes which are used around the council and they are thinking radically, how things can be done more automated, how it can be done paperless, how it can be done so the same service is delivered but done at a cheaper unit cost. And I'm happy to give you the reassurance, but I do agree with you, yes, we need to in the weeks and months ahead, get a lot more granular and more detailed about the specific savings, but obviously the review is ongoing, which is taking part and obviously the changes which would need to take place need to go through management and of course come to executive. So I do take your point, but I can assure you and reassure you that it's in hand. To the report, members. The report on page nine to 58 outlines the medium term financial strategy for 2019, 2020, up to 2021, 2022, including the general front budget. I'm pleased to say that with the hard work of officers and members, we can once again present to council a balanced budget. As most of you are aware, there have been significant challenges. I am however pleased to report that this budget contains no cuts in services, no reductions in community grants and no raises in car parking charges within this financial year. Once again, with the help of officers and members, we have managed to offset rising inflationary costs with efficiencies, innovation and improved procurement strategies, accompanied by a small rise in council tax of approximately 10p a week on a band E property. Our residents can remain confident that this administration will continue to work to ensure there will be no cuts in resident services or community grants across the borough. However, whilst we balance the budget, ensured no cuts and whilst our stated aspiration is to maintain this position, I must remind members that we face a number of significant risks to our financial position. We're increasingly concerned about the future of the new homes bonus, which pays for a significant proportion of our capital spending. There is currently a review of the business rates retention, which councillor Beeman alluded to earlier, which is worth 2 million pounds to Waverley. And the 800,000 pounds negative grant has been waived for this year, but we still lack clarity on when or if this will return. These risks to our financial position remain clear and present and if prudently accounted for, give us a negative balance in the years ahead. However, as in previous years, we've overcome these risks by a combination of small increases in council tax, procurement savings and increased property incomes. I'm pleased to report that this budget is balanced and places the council in the strongest possible position to withstand asymmetric financial shocks. Our capital spending on community facilities has been maintained, our service provision to residents reinforced and our community grants still flow to the voluntary sector for sports clubs, support for vulnerable residents and the cohesion and vibrancy of our communities. The medium term financial plan keeps pace with rising costs, increases council efficiencies and maintains services to our residents. The budget is fair, balanced and prudent and I urge you all to support the recommendations.
Councillor Hall, thank you. And my thanks to all the officers involved who've worked so hard over a number of months, led by Mr Clark and Mr Vickers and the team. So thank you, because I know you've put an awful lot of work into this and to the scrutiny committee as well, because as I say, I know you've spent an awful lot of time going through and making your suggestions, a number of very helpful and constructive suggestions, which we will also be acting upon. Colleagues, any comments or anything that you wish to add? Councillor Dinas?
Just the comments councillor Hall made. No cuts in services, no cuts in grants, no increase in car parking charges, balanced budget, what more can you say? So well done to the portfolio holder.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? No? Well, as I say, we have a balanced budget. It's balanced for the forthcoming year. There have been a number of challenges and we know that those challenges will continue. We are lucky in that we've balanced our budget, but only through very hard work by so many different officers and heads of service throughout the council. But being no doubt, we have got tough times ahead. We've still got to find our way through the next three years where we have got a funding gap, so we do have to be more innovative and as councillor Hall was saying, there's a lot of work already underway to ensure that we can continue to deliver both a balanced budget, but also the services that we want to deliver and that our residents want as well. But today, I'm very pleased that coming before you is a balanced budget, a sustainable budget for the forthcoming year. Colleagues, there are five recommendations under that item. Can I take you please to page 19, which is the accompanying report? And can I ask that we agree the five recommendations at the bottom of the report on page 19, on block, please? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving now to the next item, so again councillor Hall, and I'm not sure if councillor King might be coming in on that as well, and that's the Housing Revenue Account Business Plan, the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme for the forthcoming 2019-2020. Councillor Hall?
Apparently I'm going first, Leader.
Right.
This report shows a robust position for the Housing Revenue Account, including a realistic business plan and a deliverable capital programme. The council recently undertook a major review of the HRA finances and this work has led to the HRA finances now being on a sound footing and supporting good value for money for our tenants. There's an important point about the HRA budget, which is probably worth highlighting, which is that we are hopefully soon to hear whether or not the rent reduction policy will be taken away and whether rents will be able to rise in accordance with inflation as they have done sort of five years previously. If this happens, then it puts the future cash flow projections at a much higher level for the HRA and then the portfolio holder in conjunction with her officers and finance will doubtless conduct a full business plan review to see what the extra money can be used for in terms of building or maintaining properties to a higher standard. So whilst that isn't included in the report at the moment, we do expect in the near future, although we're not sure, that we will get this notification, in which case then there can be a review and more spending on affordable houses and maintaining our current housing stock. I'm sure the portfolio holder will want to comment, so I won't go into great detail, but I'd like to thank officers and the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for their ongoing financial oversight of the HRA.
Councillor Hall, thank you. My apologies to councillor Beeman and councillor Band, because you've got your names down to speak on this item. So if I can go to councillor Beeman first and councillor Band and then I'll follow up with councillor Mrs King. Councillor Beeman?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Leader. Well, very briefly, I mean, again, we had a very in-depth discussion of this at the Overview and Scrutiny Committee and we gave it good justice and in fact, very helpful comments were made by the portfolio holder councillor Carol King as well to this. We did however have one small, well, it's one recommendation. We did note the predicted growth in the income figure was a result of the combination of rent increases and new property being built and we did ask that these were put out to enable them to more easily see the benefits of investment in housing stock. The officers agreed, there's lots of information around these figures and agreed to provide a more detailed breakdown, particularly as this was highlighted, not only the growth in new properties being built, but also loss from right to buys. So that's our only brief recommendation, but I think the portfolio holder maybe should add some.
Can I ask councillor Band and then councillor King can come back and follow up on those questions? Thank you councillor Beeman.
I've nothing really to add to what councillor Beeman had just said, but it was an important point raised by members of the committee, that it would be extremely useful to see the impact of our investment in new affordable housing and the impact that has on the revenue stream from the rent for that housing. And I think it was a good point raised by members at the committee and a worthwhile potential addition to the information provided.
Thank you councillor Band. Councillor Mrs King?
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. And first thing I need to do is, it can't fail to do rather, is to thank councillor Beeman and the members of the Value for Money ONS, because indeed they did crawl all over it, which was very much appreciated and I thank them for that. The points that both councillor Beeman and councillor Band have just made are well founded and well taken. The loss of housing through at Waverley as a result of the right to buy has a significant impact on the number of properties that we have and it needs to be a little bit more transparent on the value for money that we get and that we'll take that on board. Back to the actual rest of the business and the business plan, it was a 30 year business plan, which for the past four years since the government have been reducing the rent by 1% per annum, this had a significant impact on the 30 year business plan. It took, the first year was really difficult. We had to really learn how to manage it properly, how to understand how it worked. And I thank officers, particularly from finance and Hugh Rackstaff, for the amount of work, Peter Vickers particularly, actually, he did a heck of a lot of work on this, to make it possible to sustain the business plan, to leave it flexible, so no matter what the government throws at us, I hope that we are going to be able to move on and expand. And as councillor Hall says, he's more positive than I perhaps am, but that's the nature of the beast, I hope that we will be able to resume our rent increases from next year and it will of course mean that we reforecast the business plan yet again. But I'm really hopeful that it's going to move forward and carry on to build new homes and improve, continue to improve the homes that we already have. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs King, thank you very much. And as I say, to the scrutiny committee and echoing thanks both to leadership and from my other executive colleagues, to all the officers involved, both working in finance and within the housing team on this area, because it shouldn't be forgotten that Waverley own over 5,000 homes, we have over 5,000 homes within the HRA. We are a significant social landlord in the area and this is a huge part of the council's business. And as I say, the points raised by councillor Band and councillor Beeman, very valid and we'll be working with the finance team to make sure that those are also included and are being reported as has been suggested. So any other comments on this, colleagues, or can we move to the recommendations? In that case, I'll move to the recommendations and there are five recommendations. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. If I move to the next item, which is item eight, and I'll just wait while councillor Storey leaves the chamber, and that's the council tax empty homes discount and empty homes premium. And again, that's councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. With the pressure on housing supply in the borough being one of this council's biggest challenges, we need to do all we can to bring existing homes into use. One of the ways we can do this is to use the various council tax measures available to us to incentivise occupation. This report proposes extending two such measures to further encourage landlords and homeowners of empty homes in Waverley, in both cases as the report states. We will, in both cases as the report states, we will still have ways that we can support vulnerable people and address hardship cases. Waverley's empty homes discount is currently 50% for six months. This is the most generous scheme in the South East. The proposal currently set out in the report is to completely remove this discount. However, I have listened to the debate at the recent overview and scrutiny meeting and I support the committee's suggestion that this be pulled back to be more in line with a number of other Surrey councils, which is one month's discount. This will allow landlords a reasonable amount of time to undertake the necessary checks between let's... Leader, I'm proposing this as an amendment to recommendation one on page 75, I believe I have a second there.
Please, a second.
And the second matter to be considered in this report is the proposal to extend the existing council tax premium for long term empty homes. The government is encouraging councils to ramp up the premium over time to encourage the owners of long term empty homes to get them lived in. The proposals are set out in paragraph 16 and 17 on page 73 and are included in recommendation two. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Beeman, before we go to the recommendations on this report, you wish to speak on this item as well and give us some feedback?
Very briefly, Leader. I would just say that again, we had another in-depth and very helpful discussion by everybody concerned and particularly the input from the portfolio holder councillor Carol King and in fact the suggestion was hers to reduce the buy to one month and I'd had wide support.
Thank you. In that case, can we first of all move a vote to accept the suggested amendment which councillor King and I believe the scrutiny committee also concurred with? Colleagues, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we now vote on the amended motion? Have we got wording that needs to go up on the board?
Leader, the wording is as per 23.1 on page 74, which was as per the ONS proposal.
Thank you, Mr Clark. Great, fine, found. So in that case, are we agreed on that amendment, colleagues, as shown on page 74?
Agreed.
We are, right. Fine, thank you. Do we need to go? Fine, right. In that case, we can move on as we've accepted the whole motion. I just want to make sure that from a procedural point of view, I have it absolutely correct. So thank you very much, Mr Hallward. If we can go to item nine, and I have no speakers on item nine. Welcome back councillor Storey. So item nine, which is the annual pay policy statement for 2019-20, and that's basically an administrative statement which we are required as a local authority to issue. That is found on pages 77 to 82 and the purpose, as I say, of the report is to actually advise all members of the annual pay policy statement for the forthcoming year. Colleagues, there's one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, which is the rescheduling of budget for works, electrical works at Moat Lodge in Cranley. Councillor Mrs King?
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. We have a senior living scheme at Moat Lodge in Cranley, which has been identified as needing a variety of non-urgent electrical improvement work in the communal areas. It was intended to carry out these works during 2018 financial year, but unfortunately the team was not fully resourced until last summer, which impacted on the operational capability of the team. Further, the full specification provided by an external consultant wasn't published until last December. We are now able to start the lengthy procurement process and we need to consult the residents and let them know what the impact proposed... and let them know what the impact proposed works could have on their daily lives, and the more vulnerable residents, sorry, which should not affect their individual flats. To minimise the risk to our older and more vulnerable residents in the winter months, it's proposed to start the contract procurement and the tenant consultation works prior to work starting, rather after Easter in the next financial year. Therefore, I recommend, or I'm asking, that the remaining budget be rescheduled into the next financial year, please. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs King, that makes absolute sense. It seems a very pragmatic approach to the situation. Colleagues, any comments, or can we move to the recommendation? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Right. Item eleven is the risk appetite statement, and I believe I have a speaker, councillor Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of points, and really as much from an audit committee's point of view. The audit committee will be reviewing this document tomorrow at a briefing. I understand the importance of the document and why it's come to the executive. There are a number of questions we've got, which I'm sure we'll submit in due course, but the, I think the one that perhaps I've got really to emphasise is that the table on page eighty-nine is, I believe, after mitigation, and perhaps you can clarify that point for me. And I think that looking down the financial one particularly, moderate appetite with losses between 15 to 100k, perhaps we should reflect on that, especially in relationship to property investments. If we really were just keeping to a very tight level like that, it may inhibit us. It depends how you measure those, is that an incident loss, is it a period loss? We need perhaps a little bit more around that particular definition, but those are my two points that I'd like to make. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much councillor Gray. Just to, your first question about mitigation, yes, you're quite correct. In terms of talking about financial loss, and obviously councillor Hall may want to come in a bit further after me, but we're talking about guiding principles here, so we can make exceptions to that, but also we will be keeping this under an ongoing review, as I'm sure you would expect. So, thank you, and hopefully that helps to clarify those two points. councillor Hall, do you wish to add to that?
Thank you, Leader. councillor Gray is quite right, I mean, if you're going to put loss parameters in place, you've absolutely got to put the timeframe and on what basis they can be tolerated, and at what point they're considered breaches. What I'm not going to do is invent one off the hoof and try and stick it into the report, but what I'm going to say, I think probably should mitigate the points you've raised. The risk management statement is an important part of Waverley's governance arrangements. The council has a risk management policy which the audit committee oversees, and the report now before executive presents an approach that will support day-to-day decision-making under this policy. The document is the end result of a lot of work by officers and the audit committee and executive councillors, who have examined the council's appetite for taking risks in its activities. This is not an exact science, but it is a document that will aim consistency of judgment about balancing of risk in decision-making. I would like to make one important change to the report in front of you, which is to propose that the recommendation is amended to add subject to comments from the audit committee, with any minor changes being delegated to the strategic director in consultation with the portfolio holder for finance. This will allow the audit committee post this meeting to bring forward any small amendments that it feels need to be brought into the report, and assuming they're not massively material, they can go in and be taken as a part of it.
Thank you councillor Hall. Colleagues, first of all, unless you've got further comments to add, we need to vote to accept that amendment. Can I have a second for councillor Hall, please? councillor Edwards? Thank you. So, can we agree that we are going to accept the amendment?
Agreed.
Thank you. And then we will be voting on the amended motion before you, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Hall, thank you. And we move to item twelve, and again, I believe I have councillor Seaborn who'd like to speak on that item, and that's a property matter which is the lease of Graffham and Smithbrook Cricket Ground.
Thank you, Leader. As one of the local ward members, I want to quickly endorse the recommendation under agenda item twelve and commend it to executive members. Although I haven't managed to find out exactly how long cricket has been played at the ground in question, Bramley History Society has records of games being played between the wars, so we're looking at at least eighty years. It's sad that the Graffham and Smithbrook club has declined, but not altogether surprising given the demographics of the immediate area. On the other hand, the proposed new tenant has a rich history dating back to 1878 and is a thriving club with a large junior section. Given the ground's position in the green belt and the AONB, it's hard to see what else it might be used for, so the proposal preserves a traditional pursuit in the Graffham area, provides additional facilities to the thriving Blackheath Club, and accords with our new economic development strategy by bringing visitors into the borough each weekend during the summer. The long lease will allow the new tenants to invest in facilities should they wish, and the offices and portfolio holders, in my view, are to be congratulated for coming up with pragmatic terms, so I hope executive members will share my enthusiasm for the recommendation. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much councillor Seaborn. councillor Hall?
Thank you, Leader. The lease for this cricket ground has now expired, so the report proposes a new lease for the local cricket club on terms that will enable them to raise grant funding to make improvements for the facilities. This is the latest in a long line of leases, grants, and capital support given to our sports clubs within the borough. This administration remains committed to the goal of making sport facilities in Waverley the best in the country, available for use by all members of the community, especially the young. I recommend the executive agree the lease as set out in the report.
councillor Hall, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this, or can we move to the recommendation? In that case, there's one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And then our final item, which is item thirteen, a property matter, and that's the lease of land for an electricity substation and cabling in Farnham.
Thank you, Leader. This is a fairly routine transaction. The developer was always going to be moving the electricity substation from the development site onto our land near to Farnham Leisure Centre. The exact location's now been agreed, and a year lease is necessary to enable the network provider to complete their installation work and switch over the power supply. The details are in the exempt annex, but I'm hoping we don't need to move into the exempt annex to agree this item.
councillor Hall, thank you. Colleagues, is that item agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We have no items in exempt to consider, so no need to exclude the press or public. Colleagues, councillors, and officers, thank you very much for your time this evening. Councillors who came and spoke from the ONS and the ward councillors, and councillor Gray from audit, my thanks to you as well for your input this evening. Can I take this opportunity to thank you all for your very constructive comments and wish you a safe journey home? Thank you.